Good evening and welcome to all of our viewers on KIMA Action News. You channel, sorry YouTube channel, can't even speak tonight, and to the seventh of our 2024 election candidate debates. And I'm John Kennedy O'Connor, and I'll be the moderator for all of our nine debates that we have scheduled. And tonight, the candidates for Yakima Commissioner District Two have been invited to answer your questions on the topics that matter to you ahead of you casting your ballot this election. Now, we will welcome your live comments while we're on the air to comment. You just need to click the subscribe button and you will see yours and other comments on the right of your screen as they appear. However, we will not be putting any of your comments to the candidates during the live debate. Now, we're very pleased to welcome to the studio on my right Republican candidate Carl Curtis, who's been the Commissioner for this district since 2022. And on my left is Susan Soto Palmer, who is running as a Democrat and has a background in legal affairs. Now, we have allowed up to one hour for each debate with two candidates, and the rules of this debate will be the same as all the others that we are hosting. I will ask a question that the candidates have not been shown before, and the candidates will each have two minutes to answer uninterrupted, followed by one further minute each for rebuttals. Now, we drew lots before coming on air to see which candidate would answer the first question first, and Commissioner Curtis was drawn to answer first. But after that, questions will be put alternately. Now, both candidates have already recorded a personal statement, which you will find on our YouTube channel later on tonight. Commissioner Curtis, Miss Soto Palmer, thank you both very much indeed for being here tonight, and I'd like to start with the first question. And the first question comes from an Action News viewer here in Yakima. Is Yakima County a safe place to live and work? And how will you make improvements to the public safety of its residents? And Commissioner Curtis, you have up to two minutes to answer.
Well, thank you, John. And first, I want to say thank you, John, and the rest of the KIMA team for hosting us tonight. I also want to thank Susan, my opponent, for being interested and willing to have the debate. And I also want to thank all of our viewers who are interested in being educated on the issues and educated and take an interest in this race. So the question regarding how will you make improvements to public safety in our county? This is something that is very much a paramount priority for all of our commissioners. It's something that we, as a county, we continuously to make heavy investments. We've deployed over millions of dollars of our American Recovery ARPA dollars into the Sheriff's Office and the regional crime lab. We've invested alongside our cities into flock cameras. Flock cameras are a newer technology that allows us to apprehend and take action on stolen vehicles and warrants and things of that nature. At the end of the day, for us to continue to have a safe community, we have to be strategic in our investments. It takes cooperation and it takes coordination. I think that's the most important thing that folks need to realize is that we can't do it alone. You have to have a united front. All of our police chiefs, including the sheriff, have to march in unison and focus on the issues at hand. One of the things that voters will have an opportunity to discuss later next year will be making investments in improving our radio communication system so that our first responders and law enforcement have all the tools they need to act.
Well, thank you. And Miss Soto Palmer, you also now have up to two minutes for your answer.
Thank you. I also want to thank the viewers and the voters and KIMA for hosting this debate. This is the first time I've debated, so excuse me if I'm not quite good at this, but what I want to say is that we do need to take a collaborative approach on our public safety. And one of those resources for me is making sure that our community is involved. As with everything, it's important for our communities to have a voice in what is happening and also make sure that we have the resources, not just the resources of the sheriff, but also what other resources, mental health resources and other things that we're seeing that is helping with the issues of people not feeling safe. Another way that we don't feel safe is when we don't have homes. So not being able to house people appropriately leads to some safety issues. So battling all that as a community together, making sure that voices are heard.
Mr. Curtis, you have one minute to follow up.
Yeah, I'll just expand on the regional crime lab. We talk about it a lot in our community and the successes that we've seen so far, essentially increasing the turnaround time for evidence from waiting over six months on the state crime lab to getting results back in two weeks. The regional crime lab has so much opportunity to grow, and that's what I'm excited for moving forward in the future. The other thing I will add is our Designated Crisis Responder Program. These are trained professionals, trained mental health professionals that allow our, sit alongside our law enforcement and allow a behavioral health specialist in a time of need. A lot of the times when officers roll up to a situation that's, when someone's dealing with mental health, this designated crisis responder will help.
And Miss Soto Palmer, you have a further one minute if there's anything you'd like to add.
Those are important programs, and I hope to expand on those for sure because we do have a great need. And the crime lab is very important, but we also need the resources in our justice center to be able to carry those forth. So a crime lab is great, but if we don't have attorneys being able to prosecute and defend defendants in the criminal system, then we are failing our community.
Well, thank you both very much indeed for your. And our second question tonight also comes from an Action News viewer here in Yakima. What are your plans to help the homeless population in Yakima County? And Miss Soto Palmer, you already touched on that briefly, but you can answer first, and you have up to two minutes.
Thank you. This is a problem of, that is a symptom of a bigger problem. Everybody, or most everybody, can be a paycheck to two away from ending up homeless. And it's a crisis. It's a crisis, not just in Yakima County, but throughout. So I believe that we should take a look at what is helping in other communities and figure out what would work for our community. We need to start making sure that we're using our dollars wisely in those areas instead of just treating the symptoms. We need to find what are solutions and what are the broader solutions that we can advocate for in Olympia and in DC. We must battle the solution because it is a problem that's been growing for many, many years.
And Mr. Curtis, you also have up to two minutes for your answer.
Yeah, thank you, John, for this question. It is a very, a big question, and it's one that I spent a lot of time on in regards to homelessness in Yakima County. I spent a great deal of time last year really doing my due diligence to understand the homeless response system in Yakima County. I think it's important for the viewers to know that Yakima County, we're a funder in the homeless response system. We fund providers in our community that provide the specialized assistance, whether it's shelter, case management, outreach, housing assistance, what have you. Yakima County is a funder, but we also are the leading agency to coordinate what's called the five-year plan to address homelessness. And that is something that we will start in 2025. And that is something that is extremely important to our community because that is how we essentially will be able to spend and allocate our dollars. And so I have been working with staff to develop a really aggressive stakeholder engagement process to ensure that we're understanding homelessness on all fronts, how it's affecting business, how it's affecting cities, how it's affecting those that are experiencing homelessness. And the important thing for me is I realize that you have to be careful to not paint homelessness with a broad brush. Homelessness is complex. It's not complicated, but it's complex. There are a lot of things and reasons individuals become homelessness. And it's important for us to also remember that these are individuals that are family members. These are individuals that are from our community, and these are individuals that truly need help. I think we've been innovative in this last year in Yakima County to trying new solutions. We know that the same process is not working. So newer solutions such as bringing behavioral health services to Camp Hope and also a medical respite program that Union Gospel has been building up.
And Miss Soto Palmer, you have one minute to follow up.
I'm really excited to hear that other things are happening for the people that are just suffering without homes and other issues that they may have, medical services, mental health services, other things that could be going on for them. My issue is that we've seen these policies and we've seen homelessness rise for many, many years now. And so I'd like to bring a change to that because we need solutions now, not a year from now. We should have been tackling this from a long time ago. We seem to be very reactive in Yakima County, and it's time that we're proactive for all of these issues that have, we've been facing for years. So my, my thing is responding proactively and making sure we have solutions ready.
Mr. Curtis, you also have a further one minute.
Yeah, that statement couldn't be any more truer. We have always been more reactive than proactive, and that's why I'm excited for us to really do the hard work, ask the hard questions, look at the data so that we can truly invest the dollars that are going to make the most positive outcome. I think it's also important to note that housing is the number one fundamental reason that people become homelessness. When you have a, when you don't have an adequate housing supply or the cost of simply paying rent is way too high, it's going to cause unseen burden on individuals and cause them to be homeless. And so if we can increase the housing supply, ease up the permitting process, build more housing and alleviate that pressure, we're going to be able to get ahead of the game instead of always being reactive.
Well, thank you both. And just to remind you that subscribers can comment on tonight's debate, just click the subscribe button, and you can type your comments on the right of your screen where you will see other comments from other viewers. But moving on now to our third question tonight, which again comes from an Action News viewer here in Yakima. How will you make sure that housing in Yakima is affordable? And Commissioner Curtis, you have up to two minutes for your answer.
Yeah, no, it's a supply and demand equation essentially. We need more housing in our county so that the cost of living, both either as a renter and or a homeowner, is lowered. So what I've taken a special interest in when it comes to our housing stock is trying to understand what role can the county play in. And of course, the permitting process is a big role and a big cost, frankly, to building housing. And so we've invested in the Acela software program that will ease up the building, the building permit process, but we've also invested in staff to ensure that we're getting permits out the door in a timely manner and not passing on any additional burden to the developers. When it comes to affordable housing, though, we're talking housing that fits a certain average median income. We have lost a lot of opportunities in our county for tapping into state dollars because we don't have a local match. And so I've done my due diligence to look at all of the different funding mechanisms that the county has, and how do we streamline those so that we can put forth affordable housing projects to the state, have a local match, and get the millions of dollars we need back to actually build those housing units? I believe that is something that we can see a tangible success in a short amount of time.
And Miss Soto Palmer, you also now have two minutes for your answer.
Thank you. So when I ran in 2018 for former District Number Three, permitting was an issue even back then and even before then. So once again, I say that we are reactive and always reactive in this county. We continue to vote for people that push policies that are very reactive, and I'd like to see a change in that. I'd like to see that we are making sure we have enough staff, not after we need them, but before we need them. Is there a living wage to pay to our staff members? Are we making sure that they're getting adequate raises and that they want to stay in the county? Because I know that that is one of the issues. So if we're having staffing issues, why do we continue to have staffing issues? And how do we solve that and keep staff here in this area? That is a much broader question, of course. We are suffering from staff shortages in multiple areas throughout this county. So I think a bigger question has to be, what is it going to take for people to want to stay in Yakima, live in Yakima and perform these positions in Yakima? And I think one of those is a living wage and then diverse representation in these offices.
Mr. Curtis, you have one minute to follow up. I do want to remind you, the question is actually about affordable housing, Mr. Curtis.
Yeah, I would say that staffing shortage definitely does play a part into the permitting process, but I would also say that the reason we see more and more cost in the permitting process as well as towards affordable housing is the fact that the state continues to pass building codes that really don't, don't make sense. And so as a result, those costs get passed down to the homeowners. So when it comes to staffing for the county, this is something that I'm particularly interested in. When I first got in, in January of last year, we had about 10% of our county workforce was unfilled. That's a huge percentage. And so you do have to ask the question, well, what is going on? What is wrong here? I think fundamentally, we have to message ourselves better at the county. We have to show that when you work for the county, you are a public servant and you are, there's a larger call to action, and that is why you are, you should work for the county.
And Miss Soto Palmer, you have a further one minute.
Thank you. So when we talk about affordable housing, one of those reasons we were just told by Commissioner Curtis is that there were some staff shortages. So I believe that is one of the actual answers to why we're having a problem is that we don't have enough staff to do the processing and the permitting. And so that is an answer to the question of what we need to do to look at more affordable housing. But we also need to look at other areas where affordable housing is being done. What can we take away from that? We do not need to recreate the wheel. We need to find collaborative efforts throughout other counties that are successfully handling this issue and figure out what works for Yakima County.
Thank you both very much. And let's move on now to our fourth question tonight, and this question also comes from an Action News viewer here in Yakima. We have seen an explosion in the use of illegal drugs across Yakima County. What will you do to counter this epidemic, particularly in regard to the use of fentanyl? And Miss Soto Palmer, you can answer first, and you have up to two minutes.
This is a, an issue that is very, oh my gosh, it is very close to me. Too many people that I know unfortunately have been hit with this crisis. And I think one of the things that we need to do is look at what mental health services we have, what can the county do to provide better mental health services and rehabilitation for, for the use of, of any kind of drug, including fentanyl. Most people do not, do not grow up wanting to be abusers. It is such a significant issue and it is complex. There are many issues that drive someone to start using any kind of drug and then continue until they're addicted. And so we need to look at what can this county do to make sure that we have the providers, that we have the resources, that we have rehabilitation services and not just jail services for this epidemic. We really do need to treat this with kindness. Again, this is a symptom of a much bigger problem that we have.
And Mr. Curtis, you also now have up to two minutes for your answer.
Yeah, no, fentanyl affects pretty much everyone in our community. You've either experienced someone in your family from an overdose or you've seen an overdose occurring. So it goes without saying that this is a very much an epidemic in our county. I will say Yakima County is taking the lead in monitoring every time Narcan is used to save a life. Why that's important is because when we know what we're administering Narcan in our, when our first responders are administering Narcan or preventing an overdose, we know that there's a bad batch of fentanyl in our community, and you can raise aware, raise awareness that way. The unfortunate thing, though, is that we have a lot of folks that are, have become addicted, right? And so now you have to deal with this, this population and what are we going to do? And we have to expand our capacity here locally as far as substance use treatment. There's a lot of newer drugs out there that are becoming available, and I truly have been interested in looking into the medically assisted opioid use disorder treatments that are available because I do think that is a crux to help with the fentanyl crisis. The other thing is you've got to cut off supply. And I will, I'm proud to say that through our ARPA dollars, we were able to help the sheriff start up what's called a proactive unit. And that unit will be particularly deployed to help not only warrants, but also help address some of the major crimes that we have in our community. Unless you stop the flow, we're going to continuously see what we're seeing on our streets.
And Miss Soto Palmer, you have one minute to follow up.
I'm really, great to hear of some of these programs, but unfortunately, we do need to be very careful with how we treat people that are using these substances. Of course, making sure that we have public safety is very important and that we're keeping these drugs out of our county are also important. But we also need to treat the person that is experiencing these addictions and how do we do that in a humane and positive way to help them get rehabilitated and return to the community?
And Mr. Curtis, you also have a further one minute.
Yeah, the two other things I'll just add is that unfortunately, for those that are addicted to fentanyl, it's not a 21-day program that's going to get you well. It's truly going to take a considerable longer amount of time, 90 days plus, and sometimes it's going to take more than one, one occurrence into rehab to get well. And that is something that is going to have to be changed at the federal level to allow us to utilize federal dollars to help individuals get, get the help they need. And the other thing I will add is that this county, I think, has done a really good job of getting out Narcan into the hands of not only families that may be experiencing it, but just everyone. I'm proud to say I supported the health districts move towards opening up two vending machines that help disperse Narcan for free because whether we like it or not, Narcan does come with a sense of stigma. And I think those vending machines were able to get that resource deployed in areas that it otherwise wouldn't have.
Well, thank you so much. I do want to remind everyone watching that you can subscribe to our YouTube channel, and that will give you access to the live chat to the right of your screen. We hope you're joining the discussion. Are the candidates answering your questions? Well, let us know. But meanwhile, let's move on to our fifth question tonight, and this question comes from an Action News viewer in our own neighborhood of Terrace Heights. What is your plan to make sure that rural areas of Yakima County have the necessary healthcare resources available? And Commissioner Curtis, you have up to two minutes for your answer.
Yeah, no, coming and growing up in White Swan, I know that the rural parts of our communities often at times don't get the necessary healthcare resources, particularly when it comes to homelessness. I've always wanted to ensure that whether you're homeless in the city of Yakima or you're homeless and experiencing homelessness in White Swan, that you're getting the same access to resources regardless. On the health district level, I've been very keen and interested in utilizing the library system to allow telehealth operations or telehealth services being provided. Because we, our library system is really robust in our county. We have libraries in pretty much every town and or city, and I think that is a good way to at least get a newer technology into the hands of community members. The other thing I will say when it comes to healthcare, we have to recognize that we live in a very disadvantaged community. We have a lot of our folks that live well below the federal poverty line. And so as a result for that, when they look for healthcare access, it's very limited on where they can get that access. And so we have to be cognizant that when we have one, well, one hospital provider in our city of Yakima, that that does put a constraint on the types of services that we get, but also who's utilizing those services.
And Miss Soto Palmer, you also now have up to two minutes for your answer.
Thank you. Healthcare is something that I'm very passionate about. I was a member of, an executive board member of Whole Washington for several years, trying to raise the awareness for healthcare for all, universal healthcare, because I think that's really important. Our, our healthcare has just become astronomical for many people, even for those of us who have insurance. Many times I hear, I didn't go to the doctor because I couldn't pay my, my copay, or I didn't want to know what was wrong with me because I can't afford any aftercare. And that's something that needs to be changed. Of course, that is something that needs to be changed in a broader area at the state level or the federal level. But for Yakima County, we do need to make sure that we are, that we have access to good medical providers in this area. I know that recently, I myself, about three years ago, had to go out of county just to get specialist treatment, which puts a damper and even hinders us more when we don't have the resources to, to go. So we really need to make sure that we are fighting for every dollar possible and that we are supporting the, the legislation that's going to ensure that we all have healthcare ultimately. And that is one of the plans that I hope to bring to the table, is that we support legislative agendas that do benefit all of the people in this community, especially those that have gone unserved and are underprivileged.
And Mr. Curtis, you have one minute for your follow up.
Yeah, I would say COVID really put a dent in the way healthcare is provided in this county with the closure of the Austria Hospital and of course, only having multi-care now. It's really put a lot of constraints. But I will say that multi-care has been a good partner in our community. They've, they're putting major investments, they're, did a groundbreaking for their new emergency center in Union Gap. And so we're adding capacity, but I also think it's important to realize that it's going to take time, that yes, we did have a lot of professionals in the hospital that left and ended up going to other hospitals for their career. So now we have to build, build, build it and build them back. And I, I think Pacific Northwest University is going to be a good partner to help us ensure that we always have the specialists we need in our community so that everyone can get access here in Yakima and not have to travel to Seattle or Spokane for specialty services.
And Miss Soto Palmer, you also have a further one minute.
We, I would just say that we really have needed these services for a long time, way before COVID was available. We knew that the hospitals were having issues way before COVID. And it's really just, again, we are being reactive to things that we know we should be proactive about when it comes to the community's health and services. And so I would really like to tackle that head on, that we are looking at these to be proactive, not reactive. We need these medical providers. We've needed them. We've needed them to stay even back in 2015. I had visiting healthcare providers when Astria was open, so we knew that there was a problem way back then. And so it's the policies again that are not able to keep qualified medical providers in this area.
And once again, thank you both very much. But moving on now to our sixth question, which comes from an Action News viewer in Yakima County. In addition to a healthcare crisis in our county, mental health is a specifically large part of that crisis. How do you plan to address this situation during your tenure as Commissioner, should you win? And Miss Soto Palmer, you can answer first, and you have up to two minutes.
Thank you. Again, this is a, this is a, a problem that, or an issue that is very close to me. I have a son who battles with mental health issues. And so for me, I would like to say that we just don't have enough resources, and we need to figure out where those resources are. I know that people are suffering, that when a person who has mental health crisis does finally try to get treatment, that there are doors closed in their face. And so we need to figure out as a county, how can we collaborate with our providers to make sure and ensure that every community member is treated with dignity and respect and gets the care that they need? So whatever that looks like, if it's talking one-on-one with the medical providers, if it's bringing community in to talk with us and tell us what their specific, what their specific areas of concern are and how we can address those. But it's really trying to wrap around what is going on, where can we find some solutions? How can we find some dollars to add more mental health specialties and, and care in our community? But it is an issue that is very close to my, to my heart due to my own personal challenges with this.
And Mr. Curtis, you also now have up to two minutes for your answer.
Yeah, when it comes to mental health in our county, it is really a big issue. I would say first and foremost, we have to add capacity, and that is something that this year, when we allocated the mental health sales tax dollars, that was something we really were keen on and, and wanted to grow. We had to look for partnerships. So one of the ways we utilized our dollars was to start up a new program at Pacific Northwest University so that they can bring in more mental health providers here in our own backyard. The other thing I will say is you have to think of where mental health providers are actually needed. So for example, at Rod's House for our youth, our homeless youth, that are, our youth that are experiencing homelessness, we really need a behavioral health specialist to help them get what they need and get, get the level of care that they need. Comprehensive Health has been a great partner with the county. We utilize them to do more robust engagement in our county jail when it comes to mental health needs and assessments. Where one of the primary jails in the state is actually taking a forward-looking approach to how you handle mental health and mental health needs inside our county jail. The last thing I'll say is that I had the opportunity, well, I sit on the 911 admin board, and as a result, looked at what was our 2023 intake call volume for 911? And we had over 5,000 calls into 911 for someone in a mental health crisis and or need. That is way, way, one way too many that, that need assistance. And so I really believe that our Designated Crisis Responder Program will be able to rapidly deploy our mental health specialist where the need is at that moment. Because as you know, if someone is going through a crisis, they can't wait till 8:00 AM the following morning. So that is a program that I have very much, and think is going to have a lot of positive outcomes, but that's also one that we may need to grow in the years to come.
And Miss Soto Palmer, you have one minute to follow up.
Again, I am really thankful for the, the areas that are being worked on, but this is one issue again where we're being very reactive to something we've known has been happening for quite some time. I was an advocate volunteer for people of sexual assault, and I did this on the weekends, and I can't tell you the number of calls I got for mental health issues on the sexual assault hotline. So this was six, seven, eight years. sexual assault hotline. So this was six, seven, eight years ago. And so we've known we have a crisis. And again, I believe we just need to be more proactive about this. We can't wait to get more providers. We need to, we should have been doing this, and we need to be doing this now.
And Mr. Curtis, you also have a further one minute.
Yeah, one of the complexities for someone going through a mental health crisis, particularly when they're unhoused, is where do you, where do you take this individual, right? A lot of the times when they're going through a crisis, you don't want to throw them in jail because that's not the right place. You need a provider, a specialized provider, that actually will help sit them down and walk through and get them assigned treatment. And that is one of the challenges that we have in our unhoused community right now. One thing that I think is going to be positive moving forward is that we're actually, Comprehensive Health and Camp Hope have developed a partnership to bring mental health services to Camp Hope. And I think we're going to see a lot of positive outcomes from that.
Well, thank you both very much. Let's move on now to question number seven. And this question comes from an Action News viewer here in Yakima. The county has put more money into attorney salaries to address a shortage that's affecting the court system and effectively degrading the local judicial system. What else will you do to fix this issue? And Commissioner Curtis, you have up to two minutes for your answer.
Like all issues, they're complex, right? I think that when it comes to the attorney shortage that we're seeing in our community, frankly, you can't just keep throwing money at it. I don't think that's necessarily the end game. Yes, the county has invested deeply in increasing the salaries, so that hopefully we're attracting lawyers to take a look at public service in the county when it comes to attorneys. That's the short game. I really believe that in the long game, we're going to have to take a look at developing our own law school here in Yakima County. And I say that because you look at the success of PNWU. The success of Pacific Northwest University has brought countless, countless professionals to our community, grown them here, educated them here, and they stay here. And that's what we're going to have to do with our legal system. It's unfortunate that this current state, that we have such a shortage across the state. It's not just Yakima County. But I always like to highlight that for us in rural Yakima, as a rural county, it is a little bit more complex than, say, Pierce County or King County. We have a quality of life issue here in Yakima. Folks that live on the west side don't look at Yakima as somewhere where they want to grow a family and want to live. And that's something that we're going to have to tackle. And I think we do that by continuing to make investments in quality of life aspects for our community, pools, parks, aquatic centres, you name it. That is how you build an attractive quality of life community.
And Mr. Sotapalma, you also now have up to two minutes for your answer.
So I actually have worked for attorneys for over 30 years, and this is an issue that I have seen on my end as a legal assistant paralegal for many years now. Even before COVID, when I first came to Yakima, there was an issue with backlog. And then it seemed to get better for a short time. And right before COVID hit, we were seeing that again. This county has known that we were having issues for quite some time. And I know that Mr. Curtis was not in office at the time, but again, I go back to these reactive policies because of the people that we choose to put in office that are not looking at the transitional period of our justice system. So when this system is being affected, the crime system, it's also affecting the civil system. I work in the civil system, and I can tell you that our clients have had major issues getting their cases to court because of the backlog of the criminal system. So it is a quality of life issue. It is something that we have not been wanting to invest in as a county. How do we make Yakima attractive to people to want to live here? And yes, I understand that throwing money is not always a solution, but honestly, these attorneys put a lot of time and effort and take out huge loans to go to law school. So we need to talk about scholarships. We need to talk about, yes, the law school here. We need to talk about some other advantages for attorneys to come here. We can't wait every three years to raise their salaries because they're not going to want to stay. And we need to look at their caseloads. What are their caseloads? And how is that affecting them and their family life? Because these attorneys also need to make sure that they have time for their families.
And Mr. Curtis, you have one minute to follow up.
Yeah, we spent a lot of time talking about caseloads because that is something of concern. I will say that at the state level, they've been talking about actually decreasing the number of cases assigned counsel or public defenders can actually have. I'm adamantly saying that's not the right time when you're in the middle of a crisis. Why would you decrease the number of cases that an individual is able to see? I think we've gotten ahead of the problem. We've made the investments into the salaries. We're hopefully going to see some positive outcomes from that. But Susan's absolutely right. We've got to stay ahead of the game. We know in our county that we have a lot of legal matters that flow through the courthouse. So we will always have a need for more and more attorneys. And so we've got to get ahead of it, and time will tell.
And Mr. Sotapalma, you also have a further one minute.
I will just say that we do need to keep looking at this issue because we do need to make sure that we have qualified attorneys, not just in the public defenders, but in the prosecutor's office, and just attorney shortages all around, not this county and the state. We've seen some of our very experienced attorneys, they're retiring. I myself work for an attorney who should be retired by now, but he's having, has had issues with the final cases getting through court because of the backlog. And so we knew this issue was coming, and it's a transition problem that we were not looking at, and we should be looking at amongst ourselves, amongst community members, and the county as well.
Thank you both very much. Now, I do want to remind everyone watching that you can subscribe to our YouTube channel, and that will give you access to the live chat to the right of your screen. We hope you're joining the discussion. But moving on now to our eighth question, which comes from an Action News viewer in Terrace Heights. Without prejudging the investigation, a recent scandal in the county coroner's office has badly damaged the reputation of the county systems. What steps will you be looking to take to ensure the risk of any such situation rising again in the future? And Mr. Sotapalma, you can answer first, and you have up to two minutes.
The steps that I would take are just making sure that we're collaborating with the coroner's office. It is its own elected official office. And so the voters need to ensure that when they're voting, that they are looking at their candidates and making sure that they really investigate who they're voting for. But as a county, we could collaborate with the coroner's office to ensure that there are proper precautions in place. What is going on there? What can we do to improve the county coroner's office? Is it short-staffed? Is there some kind of check-in that we can do with the county coroner's office? And then making sure that they are up to date in any kind of awareness that is going on throughout the state. I understand that our coroner's office was investigated and found to be deficient in certain areas. So what can we do as the county commissioners to ensure that our county auditor's office is following protocol that is mandated as appropriate?
And Mr. Curtis, you also now have up to two minutes for your answer.
Yeah, I think it's an unfortunate situation. I think it just proves to show the addiction and mental health challenges affect everyone, no matter what, where you're at. With that being said, I did sign alongside my fellow commissioners a letter asking for the current coroner to resign. I do think it's important that we, to the voters and to the public, that he takes those next steps. Since this has occurred, we've had a lot of outreach from the County Coroner's Association, who's been sharing best practices and providing a lot of support to the staff that works in our county coroner's office. But as Susan highlighted, it's important to realize that the county coroner is an independently elected official, and there's really only three ways we will be able to move forward. One is the county coroner will choose to resign. Two, he will be recalled by a vote of the people, which is frankly a lengthy process. Or three, he will serve out till the end of his term. That's really up for the voters to decide on how they want to handle the situation. At the commissioner level, we provide all of the policy guidance. We provide the funding to assist with the department's needs. But I can't speak for the coroner on what his next steps will be.
And Mr. Sotapalma, you also have another one minute to follow up.
It is a very sad situation. And what I want to say is, I do want to echo what Mr. Curtis said, is that this is a voter's choice. I feel for the coroner. I hope that he is getting the help that he needs. And I do understand the call for resignation. I'm just really saddened that we're at this place. But let's make sure that we move on past that. Let's make sure that we give the coroner the time that he needs to have his mental break as well. I do understand that there's a resignation that's been called for, but we hope he's in the right state of mind right now to make a decision. And I hope that the voters will really pay attention to what steps they want to take forward.
And Mr. Curtis, you also have a further one minute.
No further comments.
Okay. Well, thank you both. Our next question also comes from an Action News viewer in Terrace Heights. The commission is a relatively small body with just three elected members. How do you, or how will you, strive to find compromises on issues where you may not agree with your colleagues and find resolution? And Commissioner Curtis, you have up to two minutes for your answer.
Yeah, I really like this question because it really shows kind of the type of individual that I am. I naturally am always trying to find compromise where compromise can be met. I think our current board has a really good balance of different perspectives on issues. We know where we stand on certain things, and we know where we're in alignment. And we work hard on where we're in alignment in moving the county forward. I'll bring up one issue, for example, solar, right? I've always believed that Yakima County shouldn't be anti-solar in our county, but rather we should allow solar under our terms. And so I've been working tirelessly to try to get county code to a place that we can update and allow solar to flow through our county permitting process and allow us to have a say on projects versus a board in Olympia. That's not necessarily the sentiments for all of us commissioners. And so I think it's important to know that where we discontent or have discontent, that we put it on the table, we make decisions where needed, and then we move on. I think it's important that you have a board of commissioners that work well together. We know where our differences are, but we work well together. I think a lot of boards of commissioners over the state will sometimes allow issues to get too personal, where you're not going to do X, Y, and Z because a commissioner voted this way. That's not how we act, and I hope that moving forward, that we have a good board that works well together.
And Mr. Sotapalma, you also now have up to two minutes for your answer.
Finding compromise is a specialty that I've worked at all of my life in the legal career. We may think that working for attorneys is all black and white, but it really is very grey, I will say. And when I first went to work for attorneys, it was hard for me to fathom that this is a very grey area where people believe it might be black and white. So compromise is one of the things that I've helped attorneys do for over 30 years now. And part of the way that I have compromised in the past is I've been a member of the State Committee of the Democratic Party. I've been national delegate. I've been a precinct committee officer, chair and secretary. And the most important thing is that we, that we're, we hear each other, that we're respectful to one another, and that where there is disagreement, that we find ways to move forward throughout that disagreement. And remember that everybody sees things differently. But I still believe that this board needs diversity in being able to represent the community members who have long been underserved and unserved in this commissioner's office. So if elected, you know, that's what I would plan to do, is bring the community's voice to this county commissioner's office and find ways to compromise for the better of everyone in Yakima County.
And Mr. Curtis, you have one minute to follow up.
Yeah, thank you. I would say that I pride myself on ensuring that every issue that comes before the county commissioners, even when we have, that we all agree on the same issue, that we are looking for that diverse voice to ensure that we're doing our due diligence. Because not everyone in our community may look at the issue on the table the same way that the commissioners do. And I really believe it's important to make sure that all voices have a voice that can be heard. The other thing I will say is, if re-elected, I really hope to engage the county in a strategic plan process that will fully align really the strategies for the county moving forward. And why that's important is because at the end of the day, your county commissioners really play two fundamental roles. One, it's funding the county organization. It's a $300 million budget. And two, it's setting the strategic plan moving forward. And we haven't had one in our county for some time, and I think there's a need.
And Mr. Sotapalma, you have a further one minute.
I will just say that this is long overdue. Again, the strategies and the reactiveness of our county commissioner's office has, albeit way before Mr. Curtis' time here, but it has been in this standstill for quite some time. And it is time for community members to have a voice. It's way past time. This is 2024, and it's way past time for community members to have a voice in that county commissioner's office, because we have been lacking at that table. And it is time for us, so.
Well, thank you both. And our final question in this election candidate debate comes from an Action News viewer in Yakima. What changes can residents of Yakima County expect to see in their day-to-day lives if you win this election? And Mr. Sotapalma, you can answer first, and you have up to two minutes.
What I would like to do as county commissioner is make sure that I am connecting with county residents as much as possible, and make sure that their voices are being heard. Right now, and for a long time, we have seen that the board meets at 10 o'clock. It's usually business members that are there, and the county has long, the county residents have long felt like they're excluded. And I understand that there have been some improvements, again, the reactive policies of many, many years with the party that has been in place. So our residents have given up in being able to be heard at the county level. And that is one of the reasons I ran. I am not a person that ever saw myself running. And so what I expect is that reaching out to everyday people and saying, what is it that this county can help you do? And how do we better make sure that we are providing for all county residents when we make these budget decisions and other decisions that are affecting daily lives? So that is the kind of commissioner I want to be, is reaching out to community, making sure that they are included, making sure that they are on boards, where we can get a true diverse voice with the struggles and the issues that this county has on a day-to-day basis.
And Mr. Curtis, you also now have up to two minutes for your answer.
Yeah, what I think the residents of Yakima and community members of Yakima will see in their day-to-days, you're going to see someone who adamantly cares about his community, working on your behalf tirelessly. Our county has a lot of issues. We have a lot of challenges, but we also have a lot of opportunities. I pride myself on doing my due diligence. I pride myself on seeking guidance from all community members and subject matter experts. I think for me, where my priorities are, one is budget. We really got to ensure that we're going to be able to sustain our local government and services by not increasing taxes on the taxpayers. We can't tax our way out of the challenges that are coming in regards to budget. Two, for public safety, we have to continue to make investments in our law enforcement and public safety, improving the court system, and really getting the flow back to where it should. And number three, I would say, is the homelessness challenge. I don't call it an issue, but I call it a challenge. Again, this is something that affects a lot of community members, whether they have a brother, a sister, an aunt, a mom, experiencing homelessness. This is something that is complex, not complicated, but it requires an individual, frankly, in a leadership position, to have the difficult conversation, to bring the stakeholders around the table, to craft the plan that we need to make measurable changes and strides in bringing solutions to a lot of our unhoused people. A lot of the times, we've been holding people in place for way too long. We have to, we have to get ahead of that.
And Mr. Sotapalma, you have one minute to follow up.
Again, I will say that while the movement is very admirable, the problem is that we have had a reactive government for a very, very long time at the Yakima County level. And it's, while we do have to do due diligence, and I definitely understand that, again, I've worked for attorneys for 30 years, so I definitely understand those, we can't just sit and wait for a problem to occur before we hit it head-on. So sometimes there are investments, and sometimes we do have to have the hard conversations. And sometimes the things that we don't like to talk about, we're going to need to talk about. And it's not always bad. It's not always a fearful thing to talk about things that will benefit our community as a whole. And I hope that as the voters look at this, this race, that they will look to see, how can we make an improvement? And what are difficult conversations that we can have and change in this community to be more proactive?
And Mr. Curtis, you have also a further one minute.
I would say this past year and a half has been an incredible opportunity for me to work on behalf of our community. I spent a lot of time learning all the things. I spent a lot of time going through our budget, understanding every program, every service that the county provides, so that I, on your behalf, can be a more effective leader in hopefully a next turn. There are difficult conversations and difficult decisions that the next board of commissioners will need to There are difficult conversations and difficult decisions that the next board of commissioners will need to make. I am prepared to have those. And I think fundamentally, it's because I care. I care for this community, it's my home and I want to, I want to make sure that it's a beautiful place moving forward.
And that's all of our time for our latest 2024 election candidate debate. I want to thank both Susan Sotapalma and Commissioner Carrotis very sincerely for being with us tonight and for taking our viewers' questions. And I want to thank you for watching and for all of your questions and comments. We hope you have found this discussion helpful in making up your mind for the upcoming election in this race. Our next debate is later this week on Thursday, October 24th at 7:00 PM, when the candidates for state senate district 14 will be invited to join us here in the KIMA Action News studio. We will once again be live on our YouTube channel at 7:00 PM. You can email your question for either candidate in that race to election2024@kimatv.com and we hope you'll join us on Thursday. Have a very good night.